Okay, I think I'm live here. So let me send out a couple of quick reminds, just so people know that we're live. And it looks like I do have a viewer. And I do believe I have managed to actually be able to see the live chat. So if you can see a chat box off to your right hand side, so can I, which is super great. Because last time, that was a real problem for me. So I can see that Juliana has already posted something for me. So and I do have some comments and questions that have already come in over Twitter and Remind, which is very, very, very helpful. So I do have a place to start with. So give me a minute, guys, and I'll jump right on in. Okay? So hang on a sec. Let's see here. Okay, all right. So Juliana has a question here in the live chat. She's gone ahead and typed in, could I please explain the difference between hybrid regimes and liberal democracies? Can a government be both at the same time? And yes, Juliana, in fact, they have to be because a hybrid regime is the same thing as an illiberal democracy. Those terms are frequently used interchangeably. Let me kind of explain why for each one, and then hopefully that'll make a little bit more sense. I've put both of the terms down on your study guide, even though most readings tend to refer to what we call hybrid regimes or illiberal democracies as illiberal democracies. Put it down, however, because several years ago on the AP exam, they did use the term hybrid regime, which is favored in, I think, two textbooks. And when they did that, a whole lot of people who took the AP comparative exam did not do so well because they used a term that was not particularly well-known. So I've included both terms here because they are essentially the same thing. So just so you understand a little bit here, we use the term hybrid regime to refer to the fact that it has elements of a liberal democracy in it, in that there is at least theoretically participation and competition. However, usually there's a limitation on freedom. And so because of that, it's a hybrid system that combines elements of democratic governance with an authoritarian system of government, which really limits the individual freedoms. So in that regard, it's a hybrid. Additionally, we tend to use the terminology illiberal democracy, which I kind of like a lot because it indicates the fact that while there are elements that may look democratic, they are still lacking sort of the elements of liberalism. Remember liberalism prioritizes individual freedom above basically anything else. So liberalism prioritizes things like freedom of speech, freedom of thought, freedom of religion, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And all of those things are really critical for the formation of an active civil society and an active, an active sort of competitive liberal democracy. So if you lack those things, then it is illiberal by definition. So a hybrid regime is an illiberal democracy and vice versa. So hopefully, Juliana, that answers your question. So if you are on the YouTube site and you can see the live chat, please do feel free to jump on in there. I can see it just fine. If you can't see it, then my suggestion would be for you to go ahead and use Twitter to either send me a question at GallowayTeaches or to go ahead and use the hashtag #AskMissGalloway. So I'm about to jump on Twitter real quick and just see if anybody's sent me that. And if not, I will jump over to some questions that I got via Remind. So hang on, let me pull up the latest. Okay. So right now on Twitter, for the most part, all I'm showing are questions from our last online study session. So I'm going to jump over here to Remind really quickly because I know I have a couple of questions that came into me this way. So first and foremost, I know I had some questions from Abby and Riley. Remember, guys, I won't just randomly talk. I'm going to need you to actually send me questions. So as soon as I run out of questions, I will stop this session. So if there's something you really want out of me, this is where you need to kind of jump in. So Abby asks, hi, Ms. Galloway, I have some study session questions. Can I explain EU anchor and war communism? Okay, so those are two very, very, very different concepts. And and we'll kind of move one from the other here. So we'll start with EU anchor, which actually ties us nicely into, say, the UK from last unit. So frequently, what we talk about with regards to the EU anchor is that by participating in a predominantly Western organization like the EU, or possibly like the UN, although I would hesitate to call it predominantly Western, it is possible to constrain or at least anchor the behavior of a country. So frequently, we refer to EU anchors with regards to countries that are either new members to the EU or are seeking membership in the EU. So like Turkey is a good example of that. Turkey for the past several years had been seeking entrance to the EU. I don't know that that's necessarily going to happen now, but it had been kind of on the table. And in order to be a member of the EU, you had to meet certain requirements. So the EU serves as an anchor for liberal democracy. That's kind of why we use the terminology as such. And so when we talk a little bit about the idea of the EU anchor in terms of, say, like politics and domestic policy with regards to Russia, the Russia doesn't have the EU anchor. They're not part of the EU system, which means they can't be constrained by the European Union's parliament or by sort of the social pressure thereof. However, they are in opposition to it, or at least frequently see themselves as such. And the collective power of the EU is sometimes enough to kind of constrain the actions of Russia, or at least it could be if the EU acts as an anchor with regards to sanctions. So that's primarily where we use the terminology EU anchor. To your second question, Abby, you wanted to know a bit about, let me double check and make sure I'm remembering here correctly, you wanted to know about war communism. Good question. All right, so this goes to Russian political history. That'll be the section under which you're looking in terms of your vocabulary. War communism is a policy developed by Vladimir Lenin during the Russian Civil War. Essentially, what had happened was that during the initial Bolshevik Revolution of 1917, land was redistributed to the peasants. Ownership of mines and factories was handed over to the peasant, not the peasants, excuse me, the proletariat. And essentially, the idea was that we're really going to take this whole, like dictatorship of the proletariat thing very seriously. And that meant that peasants could grow what they wanted, and it could be for their own personal use. And workers were now in charge of the factories, et cetera, et cetera. However, when the Bolsheviks slid almost immediately into a civil war, again, between the Red Army and the White Army, it became clear to Lenin that the position was quite tenuous. The Bolsheviks hadn't really consolidated power. They didn't have a very firm kind of grasp on the resources that they needed to win the war. So Lenin undertook something he called war communism, which was essentially putting a giant asterisk next to the idea of Marxist, you know, sort of public ownership of everything. And it was basically the state and the government and the Bolsheviks in particular, taking full control over all the means and modes of production during the course of the war. The idea was that it would be temporary, that peasants would ultimately be back in charge of saying what they wanted to grow and how much they wanted to grow of it, et cetera, be very locally driven. And then eventually, the factories and the mines would go back to the proletariat. But the fact of the matter was, was that this was the first kind of chipping away at that notion of bottom-up leadership that goes with the Marxist-Leninist state and instead is the first evidence of sort of that top-down bureaucratic authoritarianism that so comes to sort of be the hallmark of Stalinist Russia. So hopefully, that makes sense. So war communism is this idea that the goals of Marxist-Leninist state are going to be put on hold for a little while. And instead, what's going to happen is we're going to kind of shift to this much more top-down bureaucratic authoritarianism. All right, hang on a second, let me get a drink real quick. I'm glad that's cooled off a bit. I nearly burnt my tongue the last time. Okay, so I see Ally has a question for me. And let's see here, do I have other questions coming in on Twitter? Nothing coming in on the hashtag? Anybody tweeting directly at me over here? Not that I see. Okay, I'll check Remind as well, but I don't see any new notifications there. So I've got questions, excuse me, I have questions from Riley and I have questions from Ally. And after that, I have no more questions, which is not good because when I have no more questions, I will stop talking. And I see that there are 14 of you watching, so clearly, there are some people out there. Hopefully, you have questions. If you do, please ask them. So remember Twitter, Remind, or you can use the chat function. I can see all three. Okay? So let's see here. Oh, before I do anything else, guys, I do apologize for not having the current event posted. I'm so sorry. I had probably the one of the worst migraines of my life yesterday, and then I had to go and visit a friend of mine in the hospital. So I'm so sorry, I was very much not, not with it. Everything's cool now, everything's cool, but I'm sorry about that. So current event, if you can get it into me by 5:00 PM tomorrow, that would be ideal. Okay? But let's see here. Okay, Ally wants to know what the surplus value of labor is. Okay, so this gets to Marxist theory, not Marxist-Leninist, just straight up Marx. Okay? So Marx believes that objects and things that are produced aren't just valuable in and of themselves, that if you add up, say, I give you the example of a chair in class, and since I'm sitting on one right now, I'll use that example again. If you look at the actual physical material that is made, that a chair is made up of, and you try to figure out exactly how much that is worth, you will find that it is much cheaper than the actual total cost of a chair. And that that difference that you have between, say, the total cost of a chair and the, and what you can sell, the total cost of a chair and the amount of material that goes into it, that is the surplus value of labor. Because what that is, it's comprised of the worker's time and the worker's skill. And that value of labor is frequently what is taken in Marxist theory. It is understood to be kind of taken out and then usually pocketed by the bourgeoisie owners of the workplace. And the idea here is that really, that surplus value of labor should be going to the workers as a whole because of their skill and time involved. But because the workers don't have a position of power or any sort of real leverage in order to bargain, it's very easy for, for people who control the means of production to be able to kind of siphon off that surplus value of labor. So that's where that term is coming from. It's pretty, pretty esoteric there. Let me check in on Riley's questions here, if I can. So hang on a second. Nope, wrong class, my apologies. Okay, there she is. All right, so Riley had a bunch of different questions. I can't get to all of them immediately, but I will, let's start with the first one here. Riley wants to know what the difference between totalitarianism is and authoritarianism. Good question. It's a very, very good question. We tend to use the terms incorrectly and use them interchangeably. But think of it as authoritarianism is when power flows from one place, usually from one person, but it could be like one body, like a military junta or something like that. But you have power that flows from one place down, and all power flows from that one place. And that is authoritarianism, where power flows down. There's no exchange of power where essentially someone is in authority and they tell everybody else what to do. Okay? Now, totalitarianism is a form of authoritarianism. It is a type of authoritarianism. Okay? So authoritarianism is kind of the broader box. Totalitarianism is a subset. So totalitarianism is the idea that it is an authoritarian system. You have one kind of central authority and they are making decisions for everybody else. But totalitarianism is driven by ideology. It is deeply ideological because it is trying to remake the state, society, and the economy under one ideological goal. So a fascist state is authoritarian. It is. But it is also totalitarian because it is using the ideology of fascism to drive policy decisions and government structure. Yeah? A communist state, a Marxist-Leninist state, is both authoritarian and totalitarian because it is trying to drive policy from one place, but it is also deeply, deeply ideological. Now, it is entirely possible to have an authoritarian system that is not ideological and therefore not totalitarian. So for example, let's say, hmm, okay, Saudi Arabia. Saudi Arabia. Saudi Arabia is a divine right monarchy, essentially. It's an absolutist monarchy. The Saudi family basically runs the country. They don't have to listen to anybody else. Sometimes they do, but often they don't. But it's not driven by any particular ideology. It's just driven by power in the hands of one family. There's no coherent political ideology, which means essentially that if the crown prince has a very different political goal than his father does, then when he becomes king, things can shift. So it's not driven by a consistent ideology. So that's the big difference, Riley, between totalitarianism and authoritarianism. All totalitarian systems are authoritarian. Not all authoritarian systems are totalitarian. Hopefully, that clarifies a little bit. Okay? Let me jump back over here to YouTube and see if I'm seeing any more questions coming up on the chat. Good, excellent. All right, I am getting some notifications coming in via Remind as well, which I like to see because it means I have things to talk about. So I am now going to talk about Ally's question about can I explain Russians' federalist system? So Russia's federalist system here. Okay, why is it important in Russian politics? All right, that is a really great question, Ally, and it has both like a real answer and like the answer in terms of theory. Okay? And the two are different, remember, because Russia, there's de facto, there's what people do, and then there's de jure, what the law says, and those two don't always mix. Okay? So in this Russian system here, Russia is designed by the 93 Constitution to be a federalist system. That means that power is supposed to be reserved at different levels, de jure, by law. Okay? So by law, different areas of Russia have different levels of authorities and different powers reserved for them. That's not actually what happens. Okay? Now, Russia's federalist system is different from our federalist system on paper, both on paper and in reality, very, very different. And part of that is because on paper, Russia has an asymmetric federalist system, which means that different federal, I'm trying to think of the word here, federal regions, let's go with that, different federal regions have different levels of authority in this system, which basically means, guys, that depending on your level sort of within the federal system, you have more or less authority and autonomy. So for example, if you are a republic, largely one of the non-Russian ethnic republics down kind of by the Black Sea, Caspian Sea area, you are theoretically supposed to have more regional autonomy than, say, you know, Moscow does. So there are different levels of that. And the idea was to grant greater freedom to those republics and thus prevent rebellion. Exactly work for a number of reasons. And as a result of the fact that there have been two wars in Chechnya over attempts at gaining independence, that has resulted ultimately in a crackdown and an erosion of sort of the reserved federalist sort of powers of those republics. So on paper, Russia is an asymmetric federalist system. In reality, since 2000, we've seen a whole lot of attempt to kind of roll back the powers that are reserved at the federal regions, at the various, you know, kreys and krugs and republics. So there's less authority given to them now than there used to be. And a lot of that has come under Putin. Remember, we talked about Russia being sort of divided from the top down now with new federal districts on top of the existing federal divisions, and that Putin has direct oversight over those federal districts. And what that does is it's really concentrating more power at a centralized level than on a local level. So when we talk about a federal versus a unitary state, Ally, frequently what we're doing is we're talking about how much power is reserved by certain parts of the government and how much is devolved. But in a federal system, on paper, there are certain rights that are reserved for certain bodies. In a unitary system, there's no reservation, the power all hangs at the center. That's why in the UK, we say the UK is a unitary system because parliament is sovereign, parliament makes everything happen. If the Scottish parliament has any power at all, it's because the National Parliament allows it. But that means that power in a unitary system can be devolved. And so I would make the argument, and it is a confusing one, but it's one that you might think about, the UK in some ways is more federal than the Russian system is. And by that, I mean, is that there's more local control in the UK than there is in Russia now, even though it is a unitary system. Okay? So hopefully, that helps a little bit, Ally. I know that that's a bit of a long-winded description, but hopefully, that's helpful. I've had a bunch of things come in via Remind, which I totally appreciate. Riley, I'm going to get back to your question in a minute here. I want to jump over and see who else I can, I can get to. Okay? So let's see here. Okay, so Juliana is sending me some questions because Anna's Twitter is on private. So hi, Anna. So Anna's question is, could I explain thesis versus antithesis? And I could, could I also explain morality politics in the context of Russia? Okay, wow, those are really big questions. Okay, so thesis versus antithesis, my apologies. I want to say anti-thesis, but that's not how you say it. Thesis and antithesis. Those two terms have to do with dialectical materialism. Okay? Do you really want me to go into the whole thing again? So dialectical materialism, remember, is Marxist idea that people's perception and identity of themselves as a class changes through struggle. And essentially, he says that what happens is you have the technology changes and that alters the relationship of class relations. Okay? So like, think about the cotton gin and the intensification of slavery prior to the American Civil War. And when you have the change in technology, it changes class relations and that alters things and creates dialectical materialism, which is how people essentially have conflict with each other and come to know each other as classes. So the thesis for Marx is just the technology. It's how the technology changes. And then the antithesis is how the class relations changes. I can almost guarantee you, I will not ask you about that. Okay? I just want you to have the tools to be able to discuss Marxism rather intelligently. Okay? The second part of Anna's question here is, could I explain morality politics in the context of Russia? I can try. So morality politics is frequently bound up with either religion or usually tied to things that here in the United States, we would consider to be social issues. So when we talk about morality politics in the UK, excuse me, I'm so sorry, when we talk about morality politics in Russia, what we're really talking about are things like LGBTQ plus rights. We're talking about gender issues. We're talking about transgender issues as well as matters of, say, abortion. And yeah, primarily things that are kind of the focus of, say, culture wars here in the US. My apologies, I need to take a sip of something real quick. Okay, so if you remember from the What the Kremlin Is Thinking article, there was that part on, I think it was 126, where it really talks about kind of Russian religious conservatism. And I mentioned in class that a lot of Russians don't actively go to church, and that's kind of a, a result frankly, of the Soviet era. But there has been a resurgence in, in recent years of people kind of rediscovering their religious roots or kind of drilling down into them. And with that has come sort of a heightened social conservative conservatism. And that is really clear in a lot of Putin's policies and a lot of the general policy goals of, say, united Russia. In general, Russia tends to be pretty conservative socially. So there's a lot of constraint about how and why people talk about LGBTQ rights and if they do at all. So when we talk about morality politics, Anna, that's what we're talking about. So let me see what's going on over here in YouTube. Okay, all right. So Sarah wants to know, is an electoral democracy similar to a liberal democracy? It can be, Sarah. So an electoral democracy means that there are regularly held elections. That's what it means. So that doesn't necessarily mean that it's a liberal democracy. A liberal democracy requires competition, participation, and freedom. Those are the big three things for a liberal democracy. Okay? Because you need competition for the free and fair ability to people, for people to be able to compete and express ideas in the public sphere. You need participation. You need people to be able to freely and fairly access that public sphere for debate and also to have electoral rights and all that sort of stuff. And that also means that there needs to be an active civil society that is created by voluntary associations of citizens and is not made through corporatist sort of manipulations. And the last one is of course, freedom. So you need freedom of speech, freedom of press, freedom of faith, all of those sort of things. Those are elements of a liberal democracy. Electoral democracies don't have to have that, they just have to have elections. But elections should, in a liberal democracy, be free, fair, open, and competitive. Okay? So hopefully, that kind of clarifies that. Let's see here, we've got some other questions on YouTube, but I want to jump over to Remind before I forget here. That's deeply weird. Okay, all right, let's see here. I have a question from Jordan Watt that has come in. So, okay, Jordan Watt wants to know, could I please explain what pseudo-opposition is? And thank you, Jordan. I am feeling much better than I was yesterday. And my friend is feeling much better. He got a, he's a family friend and he got a pacemaker put in yesterday, so I needed to go see him. But yes, I'm feeling much better, thank you. So pseudo-opposition, all right. So this kind of goes with our discussion of political parties in Russia. And we were talking about how some of them are pseudo-opposition parties. And what we mean by that is that they look like they are true opposition parties, like, say, the Labour Party is to the Conservatives in the UK. Like, that's not a pseudo-opposition party, that is in fact, an opposition party. They have different ideas, they are run through grassroots sort of organizing and support, and they are legitimate opposition to the Conservative Party. In Russia, however, you do frequently run up against parties that are maybe not as independent or real as others might be. So for example, the Liberal Democratic Party of Russia, there is a lot to suggest that the leadership of that party, which, that party very much has different views, it's much more ideological than, say, united Russia. The Liberal Democratic Party of Russia tends to be much more openly Islamophobic, much more openly socially conservative, much more xenophobic in a lot of different ways. It's a pretty far-right, almost quasi-fascist party over there on the right. But it operates broadly with the support and permission of united Russia. That means, in fact, there's quite a bit of funds, we suspect, that is, that are being funded, sort of funneled from oligarchs kind of in the center of Putin's power, being funneled into that party. Because what it does is it creates sort of the public illusion that there is a healthy opposition and sort of competitive electoral environment in Russia, when there really isn't. Yeah, that's, that's really what I mean by pseudo-opposition, Jordan, is that there appears to be opposition, there appears to be competition, but really, the opposition parties are vetted and kept relatively powerless. And they are a means by which you kind of provide, almost think of them like steam valves. You open up sort of a window for people to kind of blow off steam this direction and keep them from, from overriding the system as a whole. In the same sort of way that Putin allows for certain youth groups to be created for protests and demonstrations, but, you know, cracks down on sort of the organic, real opposition ones. Hopefully, that makes sense there. Okay, Zuray has a question here. Let me see what Zuray, okay. Zuray wanted to know, how did Vladimir Lenin alter Marxist theory in order to make it work in Russia? All right, so the big problem with Marxist theory in Russia was that Marx truly believed that you can't skip steps. All right, so the big problem with Marxist theory in Russia was that Marx truly believed that you can't skip steps. Excuse me. All right, so he didn't think you could skip steps, that he hated capitalism. He thought industrial capitalism was a means of abuse and sort of the violation of the working class. He really, really hated it, but he thought it was necessary because through the abuses and technological developments of industrial capitalism, you also have people develop that sense of themselves through dialectical materialism. So Marx doesn't believe you can skip a step. He thinks you actively have to go through all of these cycles of history. There is a process of history that you must go through. And that's why he sees communism ultimately as the end of history. Because when you get there, then there's no more conflict. And so the dialectical process that leads to history will end. So the big problem is that Russia, as of the 19th and early 20th century, really hadn't industrialized to a great extent. There were some factories in places like Moscow and Lenin, not Leningrad, because it doesn't exist yet, my apologies, St. Petersburg and Volgograd down in, on the Pacific coast. But broadly speaking, there were two things going on with those factories. Either they were the result of state influence, that is, the czar and then later on, for a brief period of time, the provisional government had invested heavily in those institutions or in those businesses. So, for example, that's how the Trans-Siberian Railroad got built. There was a lot of state involvement in it because it was beneficial to the whole state. So it's not privately owned, and that means that there's not a lot of competition. And there's no major, like, middle-class developing. The other way that some of those factories developed was through foreign investment. And that meant that when the Russian Revolution occurred, a lot of countries pulled their money out of Russia and those factories went dark. So what that meant was that there wasn't a large working class in urban centers like Marx theorized was necessary to bring about a socialist and eventually a full communist revolution. He truly believes that it is through that conflict with industrial capitalism that, that you will have people gain consciousness. So if you don't have that industrial capitalism, you can't have people gain consciousness, which means that you can't move on into the dictatorship of the proletariat and you can't have communism. Lenin, however, doesn't agree, and this is one of his big things. He says, okay, so Marx says you have to gain consciousness before you can have the dictatorship of the proletariat and move on into this communist utopia. But we don't have industrial capitalism right now. So this is where Marx and Lenin differ. Lenin believes that what we're going to do instead is we are going to have a vanguard party, the vanguard of the proletariat. And this is going to be a group of people who are appropriately revolutionary, who have gained consciousness in a way that the rest of us just haven't yet. And that this cadre of people, this vanguard group, is going to usher us all towards this great and glorious future. And they will be responsible for kind of pushing us forward and forcing the revolution. So instead of having to go through the process of moving from mercantile capitalism, industrial capitalism, to, you know, the global communist revolution, what we're going to do is we're going to move from essentially like feudal agrarian practices in Russia to a weak mercantile capitalist system. And then we're going to have the vanguard of the proletariat jump in, and then they're going to pull us all straight down into this communist utopia. So the vanguard of the proletariat is going to be put into positions of power in this system, thus creating the nomenklatura, the high-ranking party officials who control largely information. That's primarily where they are. They're in weak, they're not weak, excuse me. They're in positions where it would be dangerous to have a, say, less-than-devout follower of Marxist-Leninist theory in there. So hopefully, Zuray, that makes sense. So I'm going to jump over here and see what other questions are going on. Any new questions jumping up on live chat? Yep, a whole bunch of them. Okay. Give me a second. All right, since I was sort of on that conversation, let me kind of jump in and answer Ally's question about what the difference is between the vanguard of the proletariat and the dictatorship of the proletariat. So a vanguard, it's actually a military term, honey. The vanguard is the front line of troops that, it's usually a cavalry force, that ride directly into the opposing army and break the line. So the vanguard force is, is the front lines. So the vanguard of the proletariat are these enlightened people who are going to break the ignorance of the rest of us. That's what they mean by that. So the vanguard of the proletariat is the Bolshevik Party and then eventually going to be the Communist Party and the Communist Party leadership. That is the vanguard party, the vanguard of the proletariat. And they are going to lead the working class to the correct way of thinking. That's the vanguard of the proletariat. Got it? Then you have the dictatorship of the proletariat. The USSR is sort of a, it's supposed to be a transitional government that is ultimately going to lead us all to perfect enlightenment where we will gain consciousness. And then we will go about the business of dismantling the state and moving towards Marx's perfect communist utopia. But since we're not there yet, we have the USSR. And that means that the type of government that we're going to have until we dismantle the state is going to be a dictatorship of the proletariat. And what that means is that the proletariat, the working classes, are technically in charge. In theory, that is what the constitution of the USSR calls itself, is a dictatorship of the proletariat. In reality, the USSR was a bureaucratic authoritarian system with a heavy degree of totalitarian dictatorship. That's what it is. Okay, back over to Remind, see what else everybody else is asking. Let's see here. Okay, so Oni has some questions. I'm going to get to hers here. Since I just talked about it, I'll go ahead and do it. So Oni wants to know what the difference is between bureaucratic authoritarian, bureaucratic, excuse me, I can't talk all of a sudden, bureaucratic authoritarianism and one-party rule. What's the difference? Okay, let me jump over here and double-check that there's nothing weird going on on Twitter that I'm missing anything. Stop it. Okay. Do, do, do. Oh, hang on a second. Sydney, I will take care of that later, honey. But yeah, study guide was available in my classroom the other day, honey. You needed to come by and grab that one. So I will respond to that separately. Okay. Let's see here. So Oni, yeah, you wanted to know what the difference is between bureaucratic authoritarianism and one-party rule. It kind of seems like the same to you. I'll, I'll be frank, frequently they are. One-party rule means essentially exactly what it says on the tin. It means that there is only one party and only one party matters. Like, rather, it doesn't mean that there aren't other parties. Because the CCP in China, the Chinese Communist Party, is one-party rule. But there are technically other parties out there. Russia, there are other parties in the Duma, but when 76% of the seats are held by one party, that's one-party rule too. So one-party rule means essentially that the policies and goals of only one political party are really considered. That's all it means. Bureaucratic authoritarianism means that rather than just having one person in charge of everything, you have instead a bureaucratic system that is in charge of everything. The USSR is a really good example of bureaucratic authoritarianism. So is the modern PRC, People's Republic of China. It's where you have a complicated parties, it's frequently when you have a complicated party-state relationship and the party and the state are sort of interchangeable. So frequently bureaucratic authoritarianism is tied to one-party rule. You're not wrong about that, honey. Okay. And let's see here. Who else have I got? Okay, I've got a question from Caitlin. Okay, so Caitlin wants to know what the difference is between thesis and antithesis, which I've already talked about, so I'm going to skip that one. And she also wants to know, since de facto is kind of what, kind of more of what people do and less of what the law says, is de facto independence kind of like faux independence in Russia? Oh, okay. Yeah, sort of, sort of, honey. So de facto is of fact. Dejure, D-E, space, G-U-R-E, dejure, is of law. So when we talk about something being true, like, it's de facto true, it means that it is true because it's what people do. Okay? So when we talk about like de facto independence in Chechnya in like 1994, what we're recognizing is that for all intents and purposes, Chechnya operated as an independent state. Faux means false or fake. So they're not exactly the same, honey. Faux would be like, if you're saying faux independence, it would be giving the illusion of independence, but not really being independence. De facto means that essentially Chechnya was acting as an independent state, except that Russia didn't recognize it. Like, faux independence would be if, like, Russia was pretending like it was independent and then you used it as a puppet state. So the terminologies are pretty close, but not directly there. That's a good question to ask, honey. I like it. Okay. And let me jump back over here to YouTube, see what other questions we have got. Sarah also wants to know exactly how does corporatism work as a form of political control? Okay, good. So corporatism is where the state or private businesses essentially fills in the void where otherwise you would have civil society. Remember, civil society is like the space between private business and the state, okay? Where you have government over here and you've got private businesses and enterprise over here. And then in between, you have this space, and that space is civil society. And that is where citizens act and form and, and kind of link each other together. Civil society is usually filled with voluntary associations of citizens. And that could be everything from your local knitting club to charitable organizations, to Girl Scouts, to whatever, to your softball team, whatever. All of those things are part of civil society. That being said, what you also have with regards to civil society is the possibility that you could have the state or private enterprise kind of intervene in that space and create the illusion of something that looks like a voluntary association that is really either state-run or business-run. So, for example, in Russia right now, pardon me. All right, in Russia right now, you have, let's see here. You have a lot of really strict laws about protest. There's been some crackdown with regards to free and open ability to protest since about 1997. Really stupid laws, by my take on it. Things like, individuals can protest, but you have to be more than 50 meters apart. So that's more than half a football field between you and the next person with a picket sign. Or you can have a mass demonstration with more than 100 people in it, but you can't have a density of more than two people per two meters squared. So that's ridiculous. And what it's meant to do is simply to kind of lock down on people's ability to publicly demonstrate, which is essentially a curtailing of civil society. Because demonstration and the ability to publicly organize and to kind of create these voluntary associations in public is, is what civil society is all about. However, there are a number of youth groups in particular that are largely encouraged by the Russian state and by Putin and by United Russia. So groups like NASHI, which is the youth wing of the Communist Party, are largely, largely allowed to organize however they like because their message is kind of checkmark-approved by the state as a whole. There's other groups. There's the locals coming out of Moscow, which is largely an anti-immigrant group. And there's also, I'm trying to think, what's the other one? Oh, there's a group with the Russian Orthodox Church that is kind of on the approved list. Oh, Youth Guard. The Youth Guard is, is associated with Putin's United Russia. And they're allowed to organize kind of however they want. So what you have here are these entities that look like civil society groups. And in another world, they would be. But they largely receive a whole lot of support from the state. In fact, there's a good indicator, particularly with NASHI and the Youth Guard, that essentially they're, they're created by, by the state itself. And that it fills in the void and it gives young people a place to express themselves politically in a way that the state can control. And so by doing so, corporatism essentially allows the state or business, but in this case, we're talking about the state primarily, it allows the state to kind of fill in any possible space for real questioning of authority. But corporatism can also be things like, it can take over labor unions and stuff like that. So corporatism is where the state, excuse me, where the state is trying to fill in the gaps of civil society. And you kind of choke it out. I always think of it in terms of like gardening. If you plant something really invasive like ivy or kudzu, it chokes out anything else you wanted to grow there. Okay, let's see here. Other questions coming in through chat? Okay. Okay, Ally wants to know what the difference is between the nomenklatura, Politburo, and Siloviki are. All right, so Ally, nomenklatura, think of it in terms of nomenclature when you look at that word. And it means named, essentially. The nomenklatura are the high-ranking party officials within the Soviet system and frankly, also within the Chinese system, but since we're in Russia, let's think Soviet. And they are the ones who hold jobs that are sensitive, particularly in things like media, high-ranking education positions, intelligence, everything like that. They are sort of the inner circle of the party. And they hold those positions because of, because to give them out to people who are non-believers or who aren't immediately part of that inner circle would be potentially destabilizing for the regime as a whole. So the nomenklatura tends to be very, very, very powerful. And in the later years, under Gorbachev and then eventually Yeltsin, when it collapses, they transitioned pretty quickly over into the oligarchy. Okay? So the nomenklatura, that's what that means. Politburo, Politburo is political bureau. I'm sorry, my nose is running a little bit and I don't really have a Kleenex near me. I'm so sorry. Pardon. Okay, all right. So yeah, Politburo is political bureau and they slam it together, meaning Politburo. It is essentially kind of the inner, inner circle of the Communist Party in the USSR and frankly, also over in China. We'll get there too. So it is the inner circle of the party. It's about, maybe about 100-odd people, maybe less than that, depending on what year it is. But the Politburo basically acts as a combined legislature and cabinet. It comes up with policies, it distributes it, it basically runs the show in the USSR. The Siloviki, the Siloviki translates to the force. And the Siloviki in particular is referring to the security forces in Russia. So if you are part of the Siloviki, you are sort of the modern-day nomenklatura in Putin's inner circle. And generally speaking, you have a background either in the KGB, FSB, or military intelligence services. That's what that means. Now, let me check real quick. I think I've got some ones over here on Remind that I want to jump over to. Okay. All right, I got a question from Jordan again and then Nick. Okay, so Jordan wants to know, what was the purpose of the 93 Constitution? Well, the purpose was to create the Russian Federation. So the 93 Constitution was actually written in 92, ratified in 93, goes into law in 93. And it essentially lays out how the Russian Federation will work as a government. Its point was to create a federal system of government that was hopefully going to be more interested in individual rights and freedoms than, say, the USSR was. However, it also was designed to be a system that was, how to put it, distinctly concerned by and limiting of potential power developing in the legislative branch. Boris Yeltsin was really concerned about potential usurpation of power under the legislative branch? Hang on. And so as a result, the resulting constitution gives a whole lot of power to the presidency and not a lot of power to the legislature and even less power to the judiciary. Okay, so all power in Russia comes from the executive. Nick here has a question. Nick wants to know, what is the difference between the means and relations of productions? Okay, good. So this is back to Marxist theory here, Nick. We're asking, means of production is just the obnoxious German Marxist way of saying "technology." That's all that means. So when we talk about the means of production, we are talking about the type of technology being used. Okay? So is it factory production? Is it using, you know, the cotton gin? Is it using, is it using three-field crop rotation? Like, what, what technology is actively being used? And then the relations of production is class relations. What's the class structure? Okay, so that's really all he means by that. He's just being obnoxious in German by making it too hard there. Okay. Now, Brandon has a question. He wants to know what are the main differences between Gorbachev and Yeltsin? There are lots of them. Okay, so Gorbachev first and foremost came to power in 85 as the general secretary of the Communist Party of the USSR. And he was kind of followed by a number of supporters in the Politburo who supported him in terms of some recognition that there was stagnation in the centralized economy of the USSR. And so he pushed for the policy of glasnost emperestroika. I would say that Gorbachev was definitely a party man. He believed in the party. He believed in the USSR. He did not want to see it end. He also was deeply pragmatic. Okay, he's the sort of guy who realizes that having a tiger by the tail is dangerous. Because of this, he was more willing than predecessors to negotiate with, say, the United States and other Western countries. And he was, I think one has to recognize that he was smart enough to realize when it was time to let go. So when, in 1991, there was an attempted kurita against him and it failed because the military wouldn't side with the members of the party who were trying to overthrow him. He realizes that things are shifting and shifting very, very, very quickly in the USSR. For a brief period of time, he takes the title, not of premier of the USSR, which was what traditionally they had been since Stalin, they'd been premiers. But he takes the title of president of the USSR and then eventually declares the USSR nonexistent. He is the one who dissolves it. He also declares the Communist Party of the USSR to be illegal, which is kind of fascinating. So he, I think, realizes that the historical moment and the political moment did not favor the continued existence of the USSR and that for something like Russia to continue, he had to kind of like step down. So Gorbachev, I would put to my mind as being distinctly pragmatic and also being someone who realizes that he had to give up power in order for something to continue. The person he gives up power to is Boris Yeltsin. Boris Yeltsin, in a lot of ways, is seen as a very strong ally of the West. He certainly is very personable. A lot of Western leaders like him a lot. Clinton certainly did. Reagan liked him a fair bit. Bush W, I mean HW liked him a lot too. But at any rate, Yeltsin was also pretty easy to manipulate. Yeltsin was kind of still caught up in the old Soviet system of clientelism and patrimonialism, where you do favors for people in order to get what you need. And they are, that allows for the oligarchs to really come to power under Yeltsin. So I would say Gorbachev and Yeltsin both came up in the same system. I would say that Gorbachev was probably clear-eyed in terms of the reality of politics and the way power flowed. Yeltsin, I think, thought he could do too much. He thought that institutions were more malleable than they were. And I don't think that he had the personal will or force or sort of the enough people behind him to tell him no, to really be able to root out some of the structural problems that were built into the 93 Constitution as a result. Hopefully that clarifies. I'm not entirely sure. But if it doesn't, do let me know, kiddo, okay? I'd be glad to go back and do things. So I'm running short on questions here. Now, I've talked for almost an hour at this point, so it's not like this is horrific. But if you have other questions, this would be the time to jump in. I do need to go back and look at some more of Riley's questions because she had a whole bunch of them and I'll go back and look at those. But while I'm doing this, do me a favor, guys, and make sure that you are checking your study guide, checking your notes and that you have a sense of whether or not you've got everything you need out of this. Because as soon as I run out of questions, I am done. And thus far, I have answered all the questions on the YouTube chat. I've gone through Twitter. I see none popping up there. Oh, I have one from Sydney. I can jump onto that. Hang on, maybe I have a couple here. There we go. Okay, so I have some from Victoria, so I'll go through those. So right now, I've got some questions from Victoria at Sydney and some Riley questions here. And other than that, I am all out. So if you don't get to me quickly, guys, I'll call it a night. So first and foremost, since Victoria tweeted at me about half an hour ago and I didn't see it, honey, because you weren't using the hashtag, but that's okay, don't worry about it. I will go ahead and take a look here. Ah, there's another question coming in via Remind. So Victoria wants to know, she says, "I don't know if you've already answered this, but what is the difference between civil rights and civil liberties?" That's a good question. Okay, so civil rights and civil liberties. All right, for those of you who did a presentation on this about the US at the very beginning of the year, hopefully some of it makes sense. But civil rights are generally understood as being more things that are, trying to think how to explain it easily. Okay, so rights are things, particularly in the United States and a lot of Western countries, that we think of as being inherent, things that you are born with, things that aren't granted to you but that you just have, like human rights. Remember, we hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, endowed with them, endowed by their creator with certain inalienable rights, okay? So rights are things that people are just born with. And civil rights in particular is a recognition of those rights in the position as a citizen and a civilian. So civil rights frequently are kind of correlating with things like freedom of speech. Think of the first 10, 10 amendments, the Bill of Rights. Think of those and those kind of fall under civil rights, things like right to privacy, that we just kind of assume that people have. Civil liberties is used more frequently with regards to things that the government allows you to do. But those terms can and sometimes should be used interchangeably. My general like description of those would be, don't fret about them too much. You can pretty much use them with impunity, so long as you're not in a court of law. You can interchange those, those are okay. Victoria, the other questions you have here, are there any other differences to the FSB and KGB other than the time period oversight? So if you remember, the FSB is the Federal Security Services. The KGB is the, oh gosh, what did they call it? Started with a C, like Community Security Services, something like that. But at any rate, essentially, yeah, they're basically the same in terms of their intelligence capabilities. Theoretically, the FSB is supposed to be more with more transparent, with greater legal transparency. In reality, a lot of the people who work at the FSB worked at the KGB. A lot of the people who run the FSB ran the KGB. There's an awful lot of like overlap there. So there's not a real sense of difference there that I would particularly worry about. And Victoria, with regards to not understanding like the antithesis and thesis stuff, honey, I'm not going to ask you about it. It's really kind of like hands-on into the Marxist theory sort of thing. If you're really confused, go back and look at your notes about that. But I'm not asking you anything about that on the test. So deep breath. Don't worry about it. It just has to do with dialectical materialism. I'd be more concerned if you didn't understand that. Okay, so let's see here. I have a question that came in from Sydney with regards to, okay, she wants to know, she says, "I know what the Commonwealth of Independent States is, but when did it come about and what is their relationship with Russia?" Okay, let me Google real quick because I don't know the date. Commonwealth of independent states. Like, that's a Google question, frankly, like when it came about. It formed in 1991. There we go. But like, those are questions you can ask Google there. But why did it come about and like, why does it matter? That's a little bit different. So essentially, the Commonwealth of Independent States formed almost exactly at the moment that the USSR dissolved. When the USSR dissolved, it wanted to maintain, a lot of their satellite states broke apart, became independent countries. Well, they were already independent, but they were essentially controlled by the USSR. So what happens is the CIS is essentially an attempt to try and maintain those relationships that developed during the Soviet era. So like Kazakhstan is part of the CIS. And those states are largely kind of in the orbit of Russia. Russia's the superpower in the Commonwealth of Independent States. They are the ones that calls the shots in terms of, you know, import duties, export duties, policy in general, that sort of stuff. It's basically all run through Russia. Okay, let's see here. I have more questions on YouTube. Yay, all right. Ashley has a really good question. She wants to know, "How did demographic trends and social cleavages affect domestic policy since 1991?" That's a great question. It almost sounds like one on the study guide. And I won't answer word-for-word questions on the study guide, okay? However, I will talk you through the basics of it, okay? So big demographic trends that you need to think of when you think about Russia during this period, sort of the post-Communist period. I want you to think about things like, excuse me. I want you to think about things like the increased rate of mortality for men, the decreased rate of fertility for women. I want you to think about things like immigration with an E, emigration, people leaving. And what does that do on a domestic sort of level? So first and foremost, there has been a real spike in the mortality rate for men since the, basically, the 1960s. Russia's life expectancy is about 70.5 years average. But when you look at men and women, it's a huge disparity. Men average about 65, women average about 77. And what that tells you is that we've got something weird going on and it's not an increased infant mortality rate. Instead, it's a very high adult mortality rate. And it's directly tied to things like alcohol abuse and stuff like that. Russia has an incredibly high rate of people who die as a result of alcoholism, alcohol-related deaths, circulatory-related deaths because excessive alcohol abuse can exacerbate heart trouble and things like that. Death by accident, homicide, suicide is very, very, very high in Russia. All of that has prompted domestic policy attempts, particularly with regards to things like anti-alcohol, you know, campaigns being run, especially during Gorbachev's years, to increasing the tax on hard liquor, that sort of stuff. But culturally, Russia really has built in a lot of of sort of the correlation between high rates of drinking and like the sense of masculinity. It's kind of assumed that people drink heavily or that men at least drink heavily. And to not do so is to call your masculinity into question. So those are things to consider. With regards to fertility rate, Russia's below a replacement level. And there have been a lot of concerns about that. Some of that has to do with access to birth control, in particular, the lack of reliable access to oral contraceptives that leads to a high rate of abortions. Another has to do with the fact that the economy has been incredibly uncertain since the 1990s, with the exception of about a decade's worth of GDP growth during the early 2000s. But as a result of that, people choose not to have children. When the economy is unsettled, people don't have kids. That's a thing. But it also means that the state has, a number of political parties have suggested doing things like giving people cash bonuses for having more than two children, which is interesting because at the same time that they're pushing that, there's a lot of xenophobic, anti-immigrant rhetoric that goes about. So when you have kind of a desire to have more ethnic Russians or more people born there, but you want to decrease the amount of immigrants coming in, the concern really isn't about population. Because if it were a concern about population, then you would welcome immigrants. The concern then is more about culture and identity and about nativism. And that's something that you can see play out there. So hopefully, Ashley, that helps you a little bit, okay? Ali wants to know, "Why did Russia want to limit NGOs and foreign agents?" Well, that's pretty obvious, honey. Russia doesn't like to be criticized. Putin doesn't like to be criticized. They don't like the notion of outside groups pointing out problems. They don't like domestic protest. And as a result of all of that, then there's a tendency to to try and try and control it through outside means. Yeah, that's the short answer to that, honey. Since Brandon just jumped in with a kind of related question to what I was going to talk about here. Ali, I kind of already talked about the alcoholism, life expectancy question. What are the 2006 and 2012 laws? The 2006 laws, I think I got the date wrong when I was talking about them earlier. Those are the laws that address the density of protest crowds, things like that. And in 2012, a lot of those laws were tested when there were widespread anti-Putin protests being held. In particular, you can see that with, say, the 2012 arrest of the punk rock band Pussy Riot. Yeah. Brandon wanted to know, "Did the USSR ban alcohol?" No, it did not. No, they, no, no, they did not. The USSR did not. In the 1980s, under Gorbachev, there was an attempt to try and campaign against the excessive consumption of alcohol. But it was incredibly unpopular, even if somewhat effective as a policy. But no, they never did ban it. Also, I mean, US prohibition is a pretty good indicator that legislating morality, especially with regards to alcohol consumption, is very, very difficult. Making alcohol is not hard. Yeah, so even if you do legislate against it or try to ban it, it's possible to get to do that. Also, it's so celebrated in Russian culture. I mean, it's so predominant that it's a really unusual idea to try to get rid of it. You'd have incredible pushback on it. All right, so let's see. I have some more questions coming in via Remind. Let me see what I've got here. So I have some questions coming in from Malik. Okay, "What social cleavage other than LGBT+ is a source of social tension in Russia and how is it dealt with?" Good question, Malik. Hang on a second. All right, well, there's religious tension, widespread religious tension. In the past decade, decade and a half, there's been an increasing amount of Islamophobia in the Russian Federation, particularly as tensions emerge in places like Chechnya and, say, the former Soviet Republic of Georgia, which is an independent nation, but still. Down in the Caucasus, you have a larger population of people who are Muslim. They're not particularly well-integrated into the Russian Federation. And there's high rates of things like terrorism in that area as a result of that, also as a result of many other things. But because of that, there's a lot of anti-Muslim rhetoric. The conflict in Syria has not made things easier with regards to that, especially not with sort of Russia's role in criticizing, say, the migrant crisis as people try to flee. They also are on the side of Bashar al-Assad, which could be very, very interesting. And because of that, they have a really interesting relationship with, say, a lot of the Muslim migrants that are trying to get out of Syria and seek refuge. So yeah, I would say that the other big social cleavage would be religion. There's also a really strong urban-rural divide in Russia. The cities are where you'll find wealth. It's also where you'll find the majority of the population. Out in the countryside, it's much more traditionalist in terms of religious practice and belief. Stalin's policies and sort of the active atheism of the early Soviet Union really didn't penetrate as much out there. So the farther east you go, the farther into the, you know, sort of the step, the more likely you're going to find a higher degree of religiosity and a greater degree of social conservatism. And yeah, also a much higher degree of poverty. Those are bigger things that I would point out. And let's see here. I think I have another question from Jordan. So, oh, many Jordans. Okay. All right, hang on a second. I can't quite get this. Oh, okay, now I remember why I put that on there. I was like, why do I have Belan on my list anyway? Okay, so Belan is a hacker. He is associated, Jordan, with a number of with a number of cybercrimes. And he's a really And he's a really good example. I think we talked about him last year in something. But essentially, he's been recruited by Russian intelligence. And he does a whole lot of sort of black hat hacking. And it's possible that he is involved in a lot of, say, money laundering activities, particularly through Russian mobs and such like that. So at any rate, yeah, that's why the FBI doesn't like him very much. That's probably not a question you're going to have to worry about, kiddo. Okay. I think that was very particular to a conversation that we had like last year, and that's why it was on there. Only also wants to know about the role of police harassment in Russia. Does it deal with people who rebel or protest? Yes, definitely. So police harassment is frequently cited when you are trying to organize, say, a political opposition group, that sort of stuff. Frequently, you can expect police harassment, people showing up at meetings saying that you're exceeding the fire code, that there's a noise complaint against you, all of those sort of things just to discourage you from physically meeting. If that doesn't do it, then it's easy enough to use the tax code to try and get non-governmental organizations or any sort of money-raising organization on charges of like a tax fraud or, you know, some sort of embezzlement scam. So police harassment is one way that the Russian state can try and crack down on any sort of legitimate growth of opposition sides. Let's see here. Sydney has a question with regards to resource traps. So she wants to know, would oil, natural gas, and metal exports be examples of resource traps in Russia? 100%, honey, absolutely. So most of Russia's economic growth over the last 15 years can be traced inevitably to, directly to a growth in natural gas exportation, particularly to the EU and Turkey and China, and as well as a reliance on petroleum. Although the oil market has softened up recently, so there's less of an emphasis there. But yeah, Russia is lending itself more and more towards a resource trap sort of thing. Ally, I just answered the Belan question. He was a hacker. Don't worry about it too much. It's not going to show up. Okay. Sarah, Sarah wants to know, how did the standard of living change after the collapse of the USSR? It got worse. It got a lot worse. It bottomed out. Things had not been real great in the 80s in terms of the economic, like, like, in general, the economics of the USSR were very, very poor in comparison to the US and the West. However, with shock therapy, where they just took the brakes off central planning, yeah, there's no market system set up in the USSR. There's all of this bureaucratic inefficiency that is built into the system. It didn't work. It fell apart very, very, very quickly. And as a result of that, you saw food shortages in most of the major cities. Things got really, really bad for a while. I have a friend of mine who told me that when something similar happened in Cuba, the only meat you could get wasn't meat. It was soy protein mixed with cow's blood, because there was nothing on the supermarket shelves. So yeah, no, things got terrible. Up until about 1997, things were really rough in terms of economic growth in Russia. Yeah. Let's see here. What social identities define modern Russia? I would say, think about them in terms of ethnicity. Think about them in terms of urban versus rural. I would think about religious identifiers, like Russian orthodoxy or not. Those are the big things. I would also say that there's a generational split. So looking at age is a big indicator there as to how people identify themselves in Russia today. Yeah. Let's see here. I'm running low on questions, guys. Got anything else? I'll wait for like five minutes. And if you can't come up with more questions by then, I'm out. Can I explain economic liberalism? Is what Sarah wants to know. Economic liberalism. Liberalism is simply the idea of individual freedom. That's essentially where we're going. When we talk about the ideology of liberalism, the emphasis is on maximum individual freedom, less of an emphasis on collective equality. So when we talk about economic liberalism, what we're talking about is an increased access to free market system and competition. So when we talk about liberalization in economic terms with regards to the USSR, Russia, you're talking about ending state control, that is, moving from nationalized system to a privatized system. It is essentially the process of moving to marketization. Okay. Anything else on that? Do you need more help on that, Sarah? Ally wants to know, who is Mikhail Korotkovsky? Mikhail Korotkovsky is, or was, one of the most powerful oligarchs in the Russian system. He was the owner of Russia's largest oil company. And if you watched the documentary, Ally, which I know you did, he is the fellow who, they were sitting around the big round table, and he criticized Russia's policies with regards to corruption in business. And he was ultimately arrested for, legally arrested for tax fraud. Actually arrested because he criticized Putin. His oil company was seized and handed over to a more friendly oligarch, someone who likes Putin. And he spent two years in a Siberian prison. And now he lives in Switzerland, and he's a billionaire. And you shouldn't feel too bad for him. Although, a little bad, but not that bad. Okay, so hopefully you remember who he is, Ally. Yeah. Anything else? I've got nothing in coming in over Remind. I don't see anything on Twitter. Oh, there's one on Remind. Someone desperate. Oh, Riley, I totally forgot about yours. Nope, nope, nope. Sorry, didn't mean to do that. Okay. All right, so Riley was, I didn't mean to skip you, honey. I apologize. So Riley asked a whole bunch about different political parties. I'm going to tell you that the ones you probably need to focus on, I would say Yabloko is more important than the other ones you've got there, kiddo. Yabloko is probably, it's in your text. Yabloko does not currently have any seats in the Duma, and that is not an accident. Yabloko is probably the only real opposition party in Russia that actually seeks to get Putin out of power. Yabloko is primarily run by three political operatives, all of whom have been arrested at various points in time by Vladimir Putin. The name itself doesn't actually mean anything. The name is a combination of their three names. And essentially, it is in favor of free-market economic liberalization. So it's largely run by people who have business interests. But they do push for more electoral transparency and free and competitive elections. That's kind of what Yabloko is really all about. And they don't have any seats in the Duma, which means they can't put anybody forward for president unless they submit a petition with 2 million signatures on it. And even then, their petition will probably be denied. Navalny is largely associated with Yabloko. He works with them frequently. So remember when you read that article about sort of trying to, you know, an opposition has been born in Russia, or politics has been born in Russia, I believe, was the quote. Yeah, Navalny is kind of that guy. Other things that I would bring up with regards to your question here, Riley, antisemitism in Russia. Russia has a very long history of rather violent antisemitism, going all the way back to the Tsarist period. Russia has a large population of, a large Jewish population. However, there's frequently expressions of antisemitism, meaning that there's a, you know, targeted bias against people of Jewish descent or who practice. And you can see this in political cartooning and literature expression on the television, all sorts of stuff. And you can also see this in terms of policy. Policy tends to be pro-Israeli in some ways in terms of foreign policy, but anti-Jewish, if that makes any sense. I would say that there are probably more involvement, there's probably more involvement in Islamophobic movements than antisemitic movements right now. But that is a small dividing line, and it's not real great to be Jewish in Russia right now. In terms of jihadi movements, you can point those out in terms of the caucuses, particularly in Chechnya and in neighboring Dagestan. I would say that's where you're most likely to find it. That's the highest concentration of Muslims in the Russian Federation. And generally speaking, Russian central policy towards Muslim populations has been really negative for at least 15-odd years. And as a result of that, you have increasing alienation, a lack of political efficacy in Muslim populations in Russia. And with the growing availability of the internet, you have a lot of disaffected populations that have easy availability of jihadi recruitment videos on things like YouTube and other platforms. And one major concern in, say, the American State Department and in the Russian security services as a whole is the rise in ISIS sympathy in places like Chechnya and Dagestan. It's a concern. That's definitely not something that's made up. You have a significant number of people who have, say, left Chechnya to go to Syria or Iraq in hope of becoming ISIS fighters, that sort of stuff. So that, I think, is where maybe we should leave it there. We'll actually be talking more about ISIS when we get into Iran eventually. So any other questions I am missing? Let's see here. Can I explain that Our Home is Russia Party, Fatherland, All Russia Party, and the Unity Party? Like, those are minor parties, and they really don't affect policy all that much because they're largely pseudo-opposition parties. Our Home is Russia is primarily an anti-immigrant party, Fatherland, All Russia Party. Those things are nationalist parties, and they're supported therefore by Putin. So they're opposition parties that Putin doesn't mind, so they're allowed to exist. Beyond that, they don't really matter. So yeah. Let's see here. Okay, can I go over the different ways Russia maintains control over its people? Like coercion, surveillance, et cetera? Oh, well, that's like everything, honey. Well, definitely, some ways is in terms of things like clientelism, in terms of being able to say, if you do these things, if you deliver these votes, then you can get benefits. Corporatism is probably bigger. I would put corporatism down as a major means of non-democratic control in Russia, where the state essentially fills in the void of civil society and prevents real opposition from forming. Whoops. Let me go back here. Other forms, surveillance, yeah, the Russian state definitely does surveil its citizens. It's hard for us to know exactly. Not being a member of the CIA, I really couldn't tell you exactly how they go about doing it. But the Russian security services in terms of, you know, the FSB are highly trained, especially with regards to cyber units and things like that. So they definitely control and definitely surveil their citizens, specifically with regards to internet usage and things like that. Other surveillance methods, I really couldn't speak to. I don't know a whole lot about that. But there's also that. The other thing that I would point out is propaganda. The state basically controls all the media now, or at least most of the media that people consume, especially television. Most Russians get their news through the television. Most news stations in Russia are owned by the state now. And that means that when you control the message, you really control the opposition. There's not a lot of space for dissenting opinions or voices or for sort of a, you know, a competitive marketplace of ideas. And I would say that that is probably the best way right now that Russia controls its population is through media manipulation and a lack of a free and independent press. Okay. What else have we got here? Can I explain what protest votes are? Okay. Hang on a second. What else have I got here? Okay. All right. Sorry, guys, I'm just trying to. Okay. All righty. So Ally, I'll get to yours in just a second. Those are some good ones. Okay, so Sarah wants to know what protest votes are. So there's a couple of different ways you can think about a protest vote. Protest votes are frequently when people will go through the trouble of going to vote, but then don't actually cast a ballot. Or if they cast a ballot, they will cast it as blank. It is a means of declaring publicly that you oppose all of the possible options on the ballot or that you think the process itself is flawed. So protest votes are essentially where you go, and the fact that you're not voting is a form of a protest. Sometimes write-in votes can be used like that. It won't have any outcome on the election, depending on how the law works where you are. But a protest vote can be where you turn in a blank ballot. In Russia, those were used fairly frequently in, say, the 2011 election, 2012, my apologies, 2012 election. We're pretty sure there was a high degree of protest votes, but you couldn't tell based off of the outcome. So there's that. Okay. Ally wants to know, how does the prosecution of the political elite or oligarchs impact political efficacy of the lower class of Russians? Okay, so here's the thing. The oligarchs that are prosecuted for various things in Russia today are largely prosecuted because of their political activity. However, it's not usually sold like that in the media. It's usually sold in terms of Korotkovsky was arrested because he was embezzling from his oil company or because there was tax evasion, things like that going on. Whether or not it's true doesn't really matter. That's the loudest voice in the room. It's the only voice in the room. And because of that, there's not a lot of conversation about it. Now, the assumption might be that it's not just because of the tax stuff that this guy got arrested. He also had political activity. Everybody knows that can be dangerous. I would say that what it does by, if someone at the very top of the Russian system can be arrested and have their livelihood taken away from them, what chance does the average Russian have? If someone who is a billionaire in Russia and owns one of the most influential oil companies in the world can't hold on to his own sort of political status in Russia, then what does it matter? If you think the system is corrupt, you don't have a choice. So I would say it has a really negative effect on the political efficacy of the general population in Russia. Would political efficacy be different on the federal, district, or local levels? At this point, I don't think so. I would need to see up-to-date data on it to be able to prove it. But no, I don't think so. Because there has been such an attempt over the past decade or so to really constrain the scope of sort of political activism that anybody can have. You know, there's been discussion of making mayor an appointed position now. So really kind of constraining the amount of electing that people can actually do. So no, I don't think political efficacy in Russia is particularly great, even on a local level, because there has been such a sort of growing distrust and growing consolidation of power at the top levels. Hopefully that helps. Anything else? What's legal nihilism, Sarah? Legal nihilism is the belief that the law doesn't matter. It is basically Russia. So legal nihilism is the sense that nothing matters. Nothing is real. That the law, when it is applied, is applied unevenly. And that there's no standard way for it to be applied. And that's, it's part of the reason why judicial review is so incredibly weak in Russia. Give me something in the next minute, or I'll end it. It's been an hour and a half. You guys have asked a whole lot. That's good. That's good. Not seeing anything come in. Okay, guys, well, hopefully, this has been helpful to you. Okay? And Sydney, if you're still watching, don't panic. I'll go on the blog, and I'll make sure that that link is up and working for you guys if you didn't come by and pick up the study guide in class. But I will also have some hard copies left over during class tomorrow, if you haven't picked one up yet. Tomorrow, what we'll be doing? Remember, it's a split day. Check with Dr. Roch and I to see what day it is in Synergy, because I think that might have flipped on us. So we'll let you know where you start out, but it doesn't particularly matter, because I'll see both of you anyway. Remember, you have a macro quiz tomorrow. Study. Okay? And we'll do some review games in class and get you ready for your final coming up. Okay? All right? All right, I will see you later, guys. Take care. Bye.